Mayor, I'd like to call to order the work session meeting of the Elmwood Park Mayor and Council for March 11, 2021. To order at 7:00 PM on roll call, Council members Ballistieri.
Here.
Ficori.
Here.
Fasolo.
Here.
Golebeck.
Here.
Pellegrine.
Here.
Council President Wetchler.
Here.
Mayor Coletti.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Erin. Ladies and gentlemen, you witnessed a special meeting prior, and now this is our regular work meeting, where as Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of the State of New Jersey require at the commencement of every meeting, a statement of compliance be read by the presiding officer. Now therefore be advised that the meeting requirements for this meeting have been met by publishing an annual notice in the record and Herald News of Woodland Park, and by also posting such notice in office of the barrel clerk, as well as in a public place within the municipal building, and by notifying interested citizens. Notice was posted on January 8, 2021, and published on January 13, 2021. Would anyone from the public like to be heard?
Mayor, if we can have a motion to open the public?
Yeah, I think that would be appropriate.
Second.
All in favor?
Perfect.
Now, would anyone from the public like to be heard? If not, I'll close the public portion. Erin?
Thank you, Mayor. So once again this evening, we have a special presentation for two Elmwood Park Crew soccer teams. Tonight, we will be honoring the Elmwood Park Crew U-11 B Coyotes, and also the U-12 B Tigers for their stellar season in the Morris County Youth Soccer League. So with that being said, Mayor.
Yes.
We have some certificates for everyone, followed by trophies. So the floor is yours.
Before we do that, Erin, I'm going to ask Councilman Ficori, who's been longtime coach, president of the soccer teams in town here, and I know this is a special night for him, I'm going to ask him to say a few words.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to congratulate all the kids, all the players, great job, coaches, parents, of course. Keep up the good work. You're only going to move up the ladder, so from division to division to division, and it gets a little bit harder, and hey, you get used to it. So congratulation to all of you for a great achievement, and you have to thank your parents. Without them, you can't go to the field, I guarantee you that. But I have to remember, Mayor Mola, one time, he told my kids, "Do good in school. Sports is great. Enjoy the sports, have fun, but do well in school." Because at a higher level, if you're not doing well in school, you're going to be sitting on the bench, I guarantee you. So please, do good in school, and you'll be successful in life. Good luck to you. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmen. Okay, let's get started. We have our rec director here, our liaison to the rec department. If they would come forth, please, as we administer the trophies for these young people. This lady here is a pro at this. She can pronounce anyone's name. God bless her.
Sure. Sammy. Congratulations to everyone, to parents and all other players and coaches. First, Isaiah Colvin. Can you come up here? Thank you. Michael Edelman. Prender Rivera. Matthew Bennett. And then we have two coaches. We have a coach for this team, right? So, yes. Hold on. Mr. Mayor, go ahead. Okay, all right.
On behalf of Elmwood Park, the Borough of Elmwood Park, Mayor and Council, commend you for a successful soccer season. Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, nice hand of applause here for your coach. Okay, well, let me finish with this one. I'm not finished with this guy yet. Ladies and gentlemen, we know the importance of the efforts made by the coaches. Without them, we probably wouldn't be sitting here tonight. So we want to make special attention towards the coaches, and we want to thank you very much, giving up your time and everything that goes along with it. Okay. His wife is here. Boy, I wish I could get my wife to do things like this. You know what? She's telling me to go, right? I can't say it in front of these children. Well, on behalf of your husband, which behind every good coach is a strong lady, right? We want to give equal opportunity today. I want to thank you very much, and the reading is typical of what I read before, "The Borough of Elmwood Park, Mayor and Council for Successful Soccer Season." Thank you very much. Okay. Mr. Young.
Now, we have U-12 team. Gabriel Zambrano. Andrej Duteski. And Matthew Barrios. And Kevin Espinoza.
Did I get that right?
Perfect.
Perfect, there you go. Thank you very much. We know the time you put in. I know you've been at this a long time, and I'm sure the parents appreciate the time you've put in, as we do as administrators of this town. So thank you very much. This one I can't do with an Italian accent. Cabrera. Coach, where are you? Oh, here he is. Coach, I'm just going to say ditto. All kidding aside, thank you very much. It's well appreciated, and I'm sure the parents, they realize it. Each and every hour you're putting in with their children, and you're setting an example, not only for the sport, but you're setting an example of life for these children. Okay, we're going to take another picture. Okay?
Sir, could you please sign your name right here?
A few words from our council. We're going to have the council speak. We'll start with Mrs. Ballistieri.
Okay, I just want to say congratulations to the Elmwood Park U-11 and U-12 Crew Soccer Team. You make our mayor and council and community very proud. Once again, an achievement you all worked very hard for. Your coaches are completely committed to their athletes, and this is the result of their commitment. We should never forget your parents and family members, who get you to where you need to be throughout the season. This is a team effort through and through, and very proud of all of you. Congratulations again, and we will see you next year.
Thank you, Mrs. Ballistieri. Councilman Ficori, for the second time.
Thank you, Mayor. Oops. Again, congratulations to the U-11 boys, U-12 boys. You did a great job throughout the season. Keep up the good work, and good luck to you next season. Season is only three weeks away, so good luck to you. Thank you.
Councilman Fasolo.
Congratulations to all the members of EP Crew. Every time you step on that field, you not only represent yourselves and your team, but you also represent Elmwood Park, and you made us very proud. Not just because you've won, but because you've learned many important lessons along the way. So congratulations to all of you.
Councilman Golebeck.
Great job, guys. You make your families proud, you make your coaches proud, and you know, you make us Elmwood Park proud. So congratulations, and I hope you do it again this season. Thank you.
Councilwoman Pellegrine.
Yes, good evening, everyone. Congratulations to all the players, the coaches, and the parents. Hard work pays off. You have all made your community very proud. Keep working hard together as a team, and I'm sure there will be much more success in your future. Congratulations to all.
Council President Wetchler.
Yes, good evening, everybody. And I'd like to thank the coaches for all your hard work and all your time put into this soccer team. Parents, you're excellent bringing these kids back and forth. You're showing what sportsmanship is, what responsibility is, and how they play together as a team. And players, you did a fantastic job, and congratulations. See you next year.
Well, I guess the council had said most what could be said. From what I understand, you's had a great, great season. Four out of your five teams were champions. That is remarkable. That is remarkable. But like our councilman said earlier on, that it's very important to maintain your school during the seasons, soccer seasons, baseball, football, et cetera. Because the reality in life is that some of you are going to go on to play, and some aren't. Some are going to wish not to. What you're receiving right now, I call it the boot camp of life. You are learning how to communicate with your peers, you are learning to be responsible, to be on time, and these are all the lessons, other than the sport itself, that you are gaining. And it's a, sports organizations are the greatest thing that happened to this country. And for the parents, very important. We talked about the coaches earlier on, who are the main cog in this wheel, but you also are so important, the fact that you're supporting your child, you're doing all the running around with them, and it's inundated, and I'm sure with other chores you have, it's just, sometimes you just want to explode. But these are the best days of your life, believe it or not. I recall working with the football and the baseball. At that time, soccer was just really, just starting in Elmwood Park. And I met people like Doris Wetchler. To this day, we joke about things that we did years ago. So socially, it's great for your parents, too. If you look to the person next to you, probably would have never known them if it wasn't for the fact that you were sharing this great community experience with your children and your neighbors. So I say to you young fellows, I don't know how you're going to top this year. It's going to be difficult, but stay the course, damn the tarpedoes, and full steam ahead. May I have a motion to open the floor for public comment?
Mayor, if we could take a five-minute recess, so that everyone can vacate the meeting. Whoever wants to say is more than welcome to, and if you want to take the next few minutes to take pictures, that's also welcome.
I think that's a great idea. We're going to take a short recess.
Mayor, I'd like to call the meeting back to order to reestablish a quorum on roll call. Council members Ballistieri.
Here.
Ficori.
Here.
Fasolo.
Here.
Golebeck.
Here.
Pellegrine.
Here.
Council President Wetchler.
Here.
Mayor Coletti.
Here.
We have a quorum. Okay, continuing on with the rest of our agenda under correspondence, we have a letter of resignation from one of our dispatchers. The police department is already in the process of looking to fill that vacancy. Following that, under 1B, we have the New Jersey Turnpike Authority statewide multi-permit application. If anyone's interested in reviewing that application, they can do so on the attached website on that notice. Moving on to resolutions. 2A is a request from our Director of Parks and Recreation, Mr. Warren, who is looking to reinstate the sports team stipends within the rec department.
Mike, can you please expound on that?
Yes, Mayor. We met with the directoration director and all of the sports programs, and in the past, they used to receive stipends for the athletes, for gear, uniforms, parties, whatever. And for some reason, that stopped. However, softball has still been receiving $12.50 per child. So Sean is requesting $10 per registrant for every sport. My suggestion to the council is that, I don't want to take anything away from softball. I think we should start everything at $12.50, and I agree with giving it back to every participant.
So basically, to make it equitable across the line, we'll go to $12.50 per head. And does anybody have an objection to that?
I agree with that, because especially, they've been with the year of COVID, can't do fundraising, you really, they're really strapped even worse now, but they should all be consistent with all the sports, so I agree with the $12.50.
It's good seed money for them to get started.
Yep. And for those that even, sometimes there's an athlete that can't afford to play, so at least that helps.
It helps out, yes. Anybody on this side here, okay to elaborate? We're good? Erin?
Okay, moving on to 2B, we have...
I'm sorry. I should have sent down there, too. I didn't.
I'm sorry.
I keep forgetting, you know? I do, I do.
I agree with the $12.50, but just on the record, I think that we need to raise it more, maybe next time, because I think $12.50 is really nothing for what they do. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Fasolo? We're good?
Okay, moving on to 2B, is the proposal for services, finally, for our traffic signalization at River Road and Drive. Looking forward for that project to go underway.
Yes, finally, we're getting somewhere. How many years?
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
And I don't know whether someone can answer it here. Typically speaking, their design and engineering fees services are usually what, 15% to 20% of a project?
Yeah.
So this is one, and I don't know if it applies to a project like this, but this comes out to $128,000. If I'm doing my math right, that would indicate that the construction cost of this project would be $1.3 million, $1.4 million. Is that accurate? Am I looking at it the right way? I mean, this is adding a traffic signal. I don't know. I don't know if I'm onto something or not.
What's their fee?
$128,000, right? So again, usually the math is just whatever, 15%, 20%, and this would suggest that the value of the project is well in excess of a million dollars. I don't know that it is. I just...
I agree with you.
I feel like the engineer needs to kind of make sense of that. So, not that I want to slow this down, but I mean, it's gone on for a long time, and we got this document, and this is not the week for the engineer, so I'd want to hear them talk about it.
The previous documents we got, I looked at, they were about 17%. Some items, they've got to be a little higher, but you're right. If they're seeking over $100,000, that's stating that this project is going to be a $2 million project.
And again, since the county's paying for the project, that may be why, you know, and I'll stop there. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
But yeah, I just, I would like a little more discussion the next time the engineer's here. It's not going to kill us, because you know, this is...
Daniel, why don't we do this? Why don't we have a business agent call them and ask them to justify why this is costing us so much?
Yeah, I need more info, that's all I'm saying.
Okay, so I'll hold item number B until further notice.
Right, and Mike, if we could expedite that, which I know you're going to do automatically.
I'll take care of it.
Yeah, because we want this, before I pass on, I want to make sure the lights are in place.
All right, 2C goes hand in hand with 2B. However, it's the Bergen County Traffic Signalization Agreement. Would you like me to hold off on that for further clarification on 2B? All right.
Do we need to do that, though?
Yes, so the Bergen County formerly Freeholders, now Commissioners, pass a resolution, we need to do a matching resolution.
What I'm saying is, do we need to hold off while we're getting a clarification from the engineer? Can you move forward, or do we have to have that carved in stone, their fees?
Can I stop everyone? Can we call the borough attorney?
Oh, thank you.
Not that I have a question to him about this, but...
What'd you say, Daniel?
Thank you, Dan. Hello, Sal.
Hi, Erin.
How are you?
Good, hanging in there, hanging in there.
All right, well, we have you on the telephone for the remainder of the meeting.
Oh, great, okay. Assuming the ceremony was very nice?
Yes, it was.
Yes, it was, Sal.
Good, good. Thank you, Mayor.
Sorry to hear about your little setback, but we do...
Yeah, well, you know what? I'd rather be...
Yes. So the Bergen County, formerly Freeholders, now Commissioners, pass a resolution. We need to do a matching resolution.
What I'm saying is, do we need to hold off while we're getting a clarification from the engineer? Can you move forward, or do we have to have that carved in stone, their fees?
Can I stop everyone? Can we call the borough attorney?
Oh, thank you.
Not that I have a question to him about this, but...
What'd you say, Daniel?
Thank you, Dan. Hello, Sal.
Hi, Aaron.
How are you?
Good. Hanging in there, hanging in there.
All right. Well, we have you on the telephone for the remainder of the meeting.
Oh, great. Okay. Assuming the ceremony was very nice?
Yes, it was.
Yes, it was, Sal.
Good, good. Thank you, Mayor.
Sorry to hear about your little setback, but we do...
Well, you know what? I'd rather be cautious than sorry.
Absolutely, absolutely. Sal, we have a question. Daniel, would you like to present the question?
We could actually move forward with the agreement prior to clarification on the proposal for design services. It actually might be better to have it done first, just quickly looking over the agreement.
Sal, you concur with that?
Which agreement is that?
For the Bergen County Traffic Signalization, Councilman Golebeck asked to hold off on the proposal for services under 2B because he has a question regarding the amount. But we are saying that we can proceed with the authorization of the agreement while we're looking into that amount under 2B.
Okay, and that's for the services of?
The engineer.
Sorry, I'm missing.
Engineers.
Oh, the engineer. Okay, yes, yes.
We're good with that, right? Okay. Shall we continue?
All right, so 2C will be on. 2D is the Risk Manager Memorialization Resolution drafted by Mr. Ingraffia. Any questions? 2E is the Bergen County Shared Service Agreement for Road Resurfacing. So that's the county roads within the borough. Any questions? 2F is the Property Tax Delinquent Rates. Any questions there? Yes?
Sorry. I apologize. Is there any way of us doing, making it a little bit lower, especially with the COVID, with everybody out of work, that they don't have it right now? Is there any way that we could, you know, the delinquent rate for the taxes? People are out of their jobs. People can't afford their food.
I think it's governed by state statute.
Yeah, I think it's a state statute.
Yeah. Unless the state statute extends it, which it did at some point last year, you know, you have to follow the state statute. But just to confirm, I will consult with the tax collector, just in case.
Because I think just, you know, it's a lot of money, and people can't afford it right now. It's hard.
Yeah. Mike, if I recall what Roy had said, we're doing very well as far as our tax collections go.
That's correct. We had a department head meeting today, and the CFO reported our tax collections is probably 98%.
Which is extraordinary under these conditions, when you think about it. So to your point, that 2%, I'm glad it's only 2% as opposed to the opposite, 98%. And then it becomes a real problem.
Okay, moving on to item G, our firefighter, volunteer firefighter applications. Any questions there? Moving on to H, we have the...
Can I, Aaron?
Yes.
I have a question. I see it's an application for company number three.
There are, there were multiple.
Yes. It looks like it's up, like there's no standard format application? Or do each one of them have their own?
We have an executive, actually, our fire chief and fire official coming in. So that may be a better question for them. There is typically, there is typically a form that needs to be included that's required by the state, which every application needs to have. But I have not received at all times a application that's consistent in regards to the companies.
Mayor, if I may address the chair?
Sure, please.
I would think that when you have, this is the first time I have seen a different kind of application. So it raises question on my part as to what policies the municipality has, which concerns me legally. So therefore, I'm happy to address this later on.
When you say address it, do you want to...
When we're having the meeting with the fire...
Okay, very good.
I just raised the concern now because I just saw, I saw this earlier when I was reviewing the packet. And I found it all of a sudden to be a different kind of application that I was normally used to seeing.
Very good.
Okay.
Moving along.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item number H. Similar to the Route 80 NJDOT agreement, we received one in regards to Route 4, River Drive to Tunbridge Road. I gave it to Mr. Cristaldi last week to review. It was reviewed by our engineer. There are no concerns there. Mr. Cars has also reviewed it. And at this current time, it's in the hands of our attorney. So if he doesn't have any concerns, we'll put that on to execute for next week's meeting. It does seem to have been sent out late by the NJDOT. So they have expressed their concerns in getting it passed as soon as possible.
Okay. Now, Mike, where is Tunbridge Road? Does it exist?
Fair Lawn.
Okay. Maybe that's why.
Okay, moving on to item number I. One of our telecommunications, our dispatchers received their telecommunications certification. Therefore, they're entitled to an education incentive with retro, which is attached there from our payroll department.
We do this throughout all our departments. We want the most educated department heads in the state. And this incentive, there's a little reward at the end. We dangle the carrot, and it brings more intelligence into the barrel.
Okay, and I received just today a resolution that I'm going to pass out to everyone. Councilman Ficori, you guys can each take a copy. It is in regards to the CDBG application for COVID relief funds. Again, I just received it today, but also time sensitive. So if okay with everyone, we'll put it on the agenda for next week. I'll give you a few moments to look it over before moving on. So for the public's knowledge, we'll be applying for just over $10,000 for basically disinfectant and et cetera to help prevent COVID-19. Is everyone okay with that?
So basically, what we're doing, we're requesting the funds that they're stating are available.
Yeah, we're applying for a grant through the CDBG. It's the second round of funding. We already applied for the first.
Okay. How come Millennium doesn't handle this?
They are.
They are?
Mm-hmm.
They did.
They did, okay.
Yeah. Okay, moving on to ordinances. We do not have backup for item number 3A. I just wanted to see if there was an update with our borough attorney. There is someone that is interested in opening up a tattoo parlor in town that is very eager and has been touching base. So I figured I'd just put it on the agenda and see if there was an update.
What's a...
Mayor, if I may address that?
Yes, please, Sal.
It's a matter of trying to coordinate an ordinance which will be reflective, which then would have to be processed through our, the planner, as well as the planning board. So I will be probably presenting a draft at the next work session.
Okay, Sal, just for the record, do we prohibit it at this...
Right now, you have an ordinance that prohibits. Any tattoo, which is, tattoo parlors, which is absurd. You can't.
Okay, so I will...
I don't know how they did that, but they did.
I'll put this on hold, and I'll inform the interested party that it may take some time. So looking at probably May or June.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
3B is a one-stop ordinance at Florence Place and St. Anne Street.
One stop. Mike, could you define that?
Yes, it's a T intersection, so there's no stop sign at where it comes to a T. Some residents have complained, although it's understood that you have to yield right away. When you come there, it's probably best to put a stop sign up, and that's what we're doing here.
So basically, it's just a stop sign we're putting up?
Correct.
Okay.
That's still Elmwood Park. We're replacing it?
Yes.
Any other questions there? Okay, moving on to departmental reports. For A, we have the Board of Health Minutes from January 11, 2021. B, Planning Board Minutes from January 20, 2021. C, Rec Advisory Board Minutes from January 25, 2021. Same for the Library Board Meeting Minutes, January 25, 2021. We also have the Municipal Court Report for January. Building Department Assignment Tracker for February. The Millennium Strategies Monthly Report. That's all their grant work through the end of February. Our February EMS Report. And then in addition to January, we have our February Municipal Court Report. Lastly, we have our Finance Report, which shows our finances through the end of February 2021.
Two questions. Mr. BA, I think we've discussed this before, trying to implement these... Trying to implement an assignment tracker for the Public Works Department. I think that'd be beneficial to you and to the council. So I just ask that you consider that again. And then 4D, the Library Board Minutes, January 25. In the minutes, it says, the contractor says between four and six weeks to completion. That seems to be right about now. Where are we with that? Because I'm getting asked by residents, and yeah, I don't have any good answers.
I'm sorry. I didn't understand the question. Library. A good question.
The minutes from January 25 say four to six weeks from completion, and we're there. So that's the only reason I'm bringing it up.
I know they were, the last conversation I had with the Building Department, which was maybe a week and a half ago, I haven't had an update yet, and I will request one soon. It was the electrical cut card that has to go to Public Service. The ball was in Public Service's hand. And I know, believe me, I don't want to compliment too much this contractor. As a matter of fact, my opinion is slightly the opposite. But when it comes to Public Service, that's a tough, get-quick item. So the ball's in Public Service's hands. That's the last I heard. Doris, did you hear anything?
I didn't hear about that, but we're having a meeting Monday night. And I'll tell you more about it for us about 3:00.
Is this, is this meeting in person, or is it a Zoom-type thing?
It's always Zoom.
Okay. So could we conclude that everything is done, aside from electrical? Is that what we're saying? Like that everything is done, that we just don't have power to the building? Is the parking lot paved and all that?
The holes filled, like? No.
Yeah. I didn't get to the back because the fence was locked. I had originally told them not to pave where that open trench was. But I couldn't see back far enough. And they fixed the fence there where I hopped over last time. So maybe if I was 40 years younger, I would have got over this one. I did get over the first one, though, and he witnessed it, right? Okay. So what we'll do is, Mike, if we can have the Building Department get an update?
Yeah, I mean, look, we've been going round and round with this. It's not the Building Department's fault. It's not anyone on this council's fault. It's the contractor and Public Service. I don't know, they have to be babysat, but who's the babysitter? I don't know who has jurisdiction here. Who's in charge of this project?
Well, the mayor and Doris, you're on the library board, right? Member and alternate. So the people ask us. They don't know.
I understand that, but in order to get results, we need authority. And I don't believe we have authority in this case. So can we take authority? Because it would have been done a year ago if we had authority.
Yeah, we've been sticking our nose in it without really having the authority. But Daniel, to your point, the delay could only be coming from Public Service now because if the furniture's in, like...
Which if, and you know this, Mayor, because you were in the business, that's normal, Public Service.
Oh, yeah.
That's normal delay.
Yeah.
The delay that backed this job up however many years has nothing to do with Public Service, the mayor and council, or anyone else other than the contractor.
True. I'm looking for an opening day. I have no interest in why it's...
Yeah, but you really blame COVID so much, but the contractors to blame.
Yeah, but I'm looking for, I want to be able to give people an intelligent answer. That's all I'm saying. I don't care. We know there a lot happened.
Every time we ask, we get the same answer. It's the contractor or Public Service.
Please, please.
Our building department... Our building department has been on top of them, going over and above the call of duty just to expedite this. Otherwise, if that effort wasn't put into it, we'd be talking about next year.
And I'm not even talking about any of that. I'm just talking about the minutes they send us to accept. Their minutes say that it would be done this week, you know, that that's all I'm going by. I don't bring this up often. I leave that to the council president, you know.
Well, you know what? I think it's self-explanatory in the sense that it's not open. It's not going to be open this week.
Councilwoman Wettler, do we know how much they have in the building fund? Will that be enough to cover them?
Are there any other questions regarding the departmental reports? Okay, Mayor, with that being said, that's all I have on my agenda.
Okay, it's that time once again, council reports. So we'll start off with Councilwoman Ballastary.
All right, so as far as our rec department, again, we have our soccer, baseball, and softball registrations are open. The Easter egg hunt, as I said last week, will be March 27. And look forward to that. And there'll be, of course, social distancing and wearing masks. I'm very happy about the, that we're going to be putting the stipends back in place. I'm not, I know at one point several years ago, I think they were up to like $25 a player, and it slowly, gradually went down. I didn't know that we had gone down to zero. But I'm happy that we're putting something in place and have a start-off point for this year. So I'm glad that we've agreed to do that. And progress, Mayor.
Excellent. Thank you. Councilman Ficori.
Thank you, Mayor. Last Saturday, I had the privilege to, me and some of my colleagues at the rec center with coffee with a cop. I think it was a great success. Thank you to the chief. Saw a lot of interaction with the residents, with the council members. Couple residents had few ideas. They presented them to the chief. And I thought it was great ideas, so he said he'd be working on them. And I'm sure he can do a great job. Other than that, progress, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Casolo.
Progress, Mayor.
Councilman Golebeck?
The only thing, I don't know if everyone's seen, but President Biden signed the stimulus today. And as part of that, there's a lot of money going to states, counties, and municipalities. And I think Elmwood Park's in line for just under $2 million. And the only thing is, the criteria isn't very clear in how it could be spent. It should be broad. It should give us flexibility. But if we get that info soon, we have a couple of grant opportunities, deadlines coming up in the next few months. That might be a nice pool of money to be able to do some significant things. So I'm really looking forward to that. That's all.
Or even possibly maybe contributing it to reducing taxes.
If the criteria is there, it's worthy of discussion, right?
Anything else, Daniel? Thank you. Councilwoman Pellegrini?
Yes, a couple of things. The Board of Health had their meeting on March 8. Our borough attorney, Sal Ingraffia, was invited to discuss protocols and procedures. Also, there was a discussion on the People's Pantry, bylaws, and committees. The next RAVI clinic will be held on Wednesday, May 12, at Firehouse Number 4 on Mullen Boulevard between 5:00 and 7:00 p.m. And their next Board of Health meeting will be held on April 12 at 7:00 p.m. Residents Assistance Update. I'm very proud to announce that the Resident Assistance Program is the recipient of a $5,000 grant award from Invest in Others Charitable Foundation. This grant is to benefit the People's Pantry. We thank Megan McCauley, the Executive Director and President of this charitable foundation. Also, a big thank you to one of our residents, Rachel Johnson, who applied for this grant through the company she... who applied for this grant through the company she works for. Rachel is always there, helping with the RAP program to aid our residents in need. This grant will definitely help fill the shelves at our pantry. Reminder, the food drive for the pantry will be held this Saturday and Sunday from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Items to donate canned foods and toiletries. Award Update. Last March, our community was awarded 2020 Municipal Innovation Award for our Residents Assistance Program. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, it was not possible to have us in person to accept this honor. On Friday, I received this award by mail due to the restrictions still in place. So tonight, Mayor and council, I present you and all those who helped so much with the RAP program with this award for all the hard work that goes into this program to help those in need. I am so proud of our community, working together to help each other. Again, thank you to the Municipal Innovation Summit for this honor and recognition to our community. I just want to show everybody, if I can. This award is very special because it's not for one person. It's for everybody that contributes to the Residents Assistance Program. And because of COVID, they wanted to have us there to honor our community, but they couldn't. There's still restrictions in place. So they sent this, and the girls in the office last week gave it to me. And it really touched my heart, because so many people in this community are responsible for this. And though it may be just a little glass figure, it means the world to our community, that working together does really help solve problems in this town. And this is for the many, many people who put their heart and soul to helping each other. So Mayor, I hope later on, we could take a picture together with this. I hope we can display it in the hallway somewhere. And this is just to show what teamwork really does. And I thank each and every one of you here. I thank everybody in the audience and the people at home that watch this. One person can make a difference. So we should all be very, very proud of this, and I thank everybody. Thank you.
Lorraine, that's a beautiful thing there. It's a beautiful thing, what you're doing. You're leading the charge. I know you're selfish about this. But we do recognize how you've taken a good program and expanded it. And I can't wait to see a year from now where we're at. But I just want to thank you. Thank you for bringing this program to a higher height.
Thank you, Mayor.
Council President Wetchler.
Okay. I'd like to thank all our EMS people with this ambulance. Without them, I don't know what this town would do. They're there constantly. I was just going home this afternoon, there was the EMS, St. Joe's, paramedics, everybody. Within, I have a police scanner, and within not even, I think, three minutes, they were at the house. I said, "Without them, I don't know what this town would do." Mike, I want to thank you for doing this, because, let me tell you, our residents, I've speak to a lot of seniors, and they can't thank this council for doing what they did with this. Because, let me tell you, it's a lifesaver for each and every one of us. Just God forbid, they're there right away. We don't have to wait half hour, 45 minutes. I know our volunteers, because I was volunteer for almost seven years, and it's not easy. But at the time when I was on it, with Ellen and everybody else, it was, we were home. It wasn't that, you know, we were working and everything else. But now with everybody has to work, you know, it's hard for everybody. But with our, the service that we have, it's, yeah, I can't thank them enough, please. Danny, we have a meeting Monday night at the library. I'm going to call Kathy Pollak Canada tomorrow and see if I can get over there. If the contractor's there, I know I'll be able to get in. I will call Mike and Bobby and tell them to come over, and we can see exactly what's going on. If not, I'll try on Monday before the council, you know, before the library meeting. And I will tell you next week. But I do work on it. But if the mayor's on with me on Zoom, I can't talk, he's the only one that can talk. So, but Danny, 19 years I've been fighting for this library to get done. And sooner or later, before December 31, I hope it's going to be done. So progress.
Councilwoman, if you speak to them before Monday, can you find out what the outstanding bills are?
Sure.
As well? Thank you.
Okay, I guess it's me, I'm up. Regarding the COVID-19 epidemic. And we get calls daily during the week from people, and they're reaching out for help. And they also want to know how and when they can get the shot. We provide them with the most updated information there is. But there is a great thing going on in the town right now with our administration, the office, and also our clerk's office. What these people are doing is they're going way beyond. And by that, I mean, when somebody calls up and says they can't physically get to a site, even if they had an appointment. Well, they're going to work on situations like that. And they are making it... Making it possible for that person to not only get to the location, but even set up the appointment. These are things that the public doesn't hear about, that go on day in and day out. The nuts and bolts of running a municipality. So I just wanted to bring that to the public's attention, and also to some of us council people who aren't in here every day. But Angela's doing a bang-up job. Erin, you and your department are doing a bang-up job, and it's not going unnoticed. That's all I have.
Mayor, can I add one thing to that?
Sure.
We have also a Board of Health member, Jeanette Randazzo, who's been really helping Mrs. Fava. They've been coordinating together to get our residents, you know, ways to get to a site and coordinating to get them the vaccines also. So they've been really working hard together. So I think that's a great thing.
Excellent, excellent. So Mike, we've got a good team, Mike.
Great team.
Mayor, I just, also, Ms. Broviero in the Tax Department has been instrumental in helping us get access to the appointments and navigating it. So thank you to her as well.
Very good.
It's a team effort, as everyone can see.
Yeah. It's, we all win in the end when we work as a team. All right, I have nothing further at this point. I believe I'm going to open it to the floor. Mayor, have a motion? Hold in favor? Public, would you care to speak? Please give us your name, your address, and direct your questions to me, please. We know, Dominik. You can use the mic, Dominik. Is that on for him?
You have to hold it down until it turns green. And speak, hold it as close to your mask. You're going to have to use your mask, have your mask on and hold it close.
Can I leave it off?
Yeah.
I can?
Sure.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Claddy, council members, Chief Aligno, Ms. Delaney, and Honorable Ingraffia. If you watch Governor Murphy's three times weekly news conferences, you would learn that they expect a quantum increase in the number of vaccinations available by the end of March or early April. In the meantime, we all know how difficult it is to get an appointment. My concern is that even after vaccinations do become available, and we really expect that to happen, that we need to know where we stand in Elmwood Park and whether we need to commit more resources to either getting vaccinations done in town or the things that you've already mentioned about providing transportation. I see that the county is going, maybe doing that for senior citizens. So unless we have this information, have, know what percentage of our citizens are vaccinated, we can't commit the kind of resources we need to. The state publishes a report. They have the...
Hello?
The hub, can you hear me?
One second, yes, Sal.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought I lost it.
No, you're still with us. We're in a public session right now, Sal, and we have somebody speaking.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay.
It was so quiet, I didn't know whether it was...
Okay. Stay with us, go get a cup of coffee.
Oh, you want me to get a cup of coffee?
I wish I had one right now, I'm sorry.
Yeah, make two of us.
So the state publishes every day, daily, they have on their COVID-19 dashboard the number of vaccinations that are done per county. But my contention is, what they're reporting is the number of vaccinations that took place in the county. So for example, we have a mega site in Bergen County. Now, that mega site serves the whole state. There's 3 million people that live within 15 minutes, miles of it. So my contention is, these numbers are not accurate. They're not telling us what's really happening. And I've been going at it with the commissioners, the county commissioners, emailing them to try to get accurate numbers. Now, I just want to give this to Chief Aligno. This is, when I looked into this, I thought to myself, well, do you have a legal right to know if people are infected? Well, you know, do we really have any right to know that they got a vaccination? So when I looked into this, I found that Governor Murphy signed an executive order in December requiring that everybody that gets vaccinated goes into the system automatically. At the end of the pandemic, if you don't want to be in there, you're knocked out. So this is the New Jersey Immunization Information System. Now, it says that local and state, local and state health departments already have access to it. But this is for individuals. So if somebody, it also says schools, college, health nurses, insurance plans. In other words, they want to check to see if somebody was vaccinated. But my, you know, this is not something that, you know, what I'm looking for is a report that shows what percentage of our town or our county is vaccinated. So I'm hoping that we can get more information in the weeks ahead and that we will know accurately and we'll be able to plan and determine whether we need to commit more resources. My contention right now is the information that we're given is not accurate.
No.
The number of vaccines, that's what I believe, the number of vaccines that are being given in the county, which doesn't tell us what the residents are. If that's at the county level, then I don't think we're getting it at the municipal and borough level.
Yeah, of course, it has to trickle down. That frustration has been since the start of this epidemic. The information has actually ridiculed itself by the day, by the week. And it's very difficult for, to put something down that is going to change by the next day. The frustration is ours also. Chief, is there anything you'd like to say about what he had said?
The only thing I'd like to say is, we check weekly, my Operations Division checks weekly to see if we could be a host site for vaccinations. We've been denied every time, so that doesn't appear to be an option right now. I don't know anything about this. Is this voluntary, Mr. Scialcio, do you know?
In other words...
This registration system for vaccinated people?
No, it's required.
Yeah, but you wouldn't be able to access that information.
No, because I'm not one of these people.
It's only for a select few, so I don't know how that would...
And then publicly, what we want is a report. We don't, this is confidential information.
Right.
But apparently, our health department would have access to it. But still, not exactly what, we don't need to know about these things. We need to know percentages, how many people are vaccinated. Do we need to, you know, provide more resources for them?
I mean, we could certainly, we could have the Health Department look into it and find out if we can get those statistics.
The thing is that they have the information, they have to compile it and give it to us. And I admit, that's probably difficult. I have here the report that we're looking for, it's from Massachusetts. And you can see, they don't issue it every day, maybe once a week. And it shows percentages, it's a map, it shows the percentages by tally, first shot, second shot. You know, that's really what we're looking for. We need it down to municipal and borough levels.
Okay, we'll have our liaison, Marlene from the Clerk's Office, see if she can make some phone calls to find out.
You know, that's at, that's at an individual level. You know, that's not something, you know, I'm looking for like a report that, you know... Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else care to speak from the public?
Mayor, if I may, just to stay on the topic of vaccinations. I know that the President today said that he was going to direct all states to open up vaccinations to all adults by May 1. So that's some pretty good news.
That sounds like a good date. Yes, sir. Is it on, Jeff?
Yes, it is. Jeffrey Frytag, 35 Hillman Drive, Elmwood Park. I had asked last week at the work meeting regarding the display of the flag and it being at half-staff for extensive period of time. As I recall...
You've got to look at Mike's.
And as I recall, I made a statement about how long the flag's been at half-staff from the municipal building all the way up to the Boulevard at the corner. And I don't know if there's jurisdiction over the Rec Center or whatever. And I know Council President Wetchler had made a comment about the post office. I know he had nothing to do with the post office. But the post office now is all the way up. Regardless of that, I received, I had mentioned it to you last evening at our planning board, as a little aside, I hadn't heard of the thing.
You're going to...
I hadn't seen the change.
You didn't get the call from my secretary?
Yes, I did, and I didn't quite understand it.
Oh, well, basically, just to explain it, prior to yesterday, it was a directive from the state regarding all the deaths of COVID-19. Today, and we had to stay at half-mast, today that was lifted. The reason it's staying at half-mast now is because we've had a department head's father die, and it fits the criteria...
Father-in-law or father?
Father.
I think it was his father-in-law, but go ahead.
Father died, there was a firefighter in town. So the policy that Scott says the borough follows is that they keep it at half-mast for 30 days. To observe the death of the former member.
And today is the day that Murphy lifted the command of bringing the flag to full mast and at half-mast due to the COVID-19.
Well, I'll tell you what, I had looked at it yesterday, and the state posted nothing. I don't know what you're looking at.
Well, that's what we got this morning, Jeff.
That point is moot, we're observing the death of a firefighter, a former firefighter.
But nobody knew this last week.
I didn't, I don't manage the flags, we talked about this. Scott Card...
Well, you said he had to be...
When I called Scott, oh, he manages the flags, we talked about this. When I called Scott the next day, he said they're still at half, and they were going to remain at half to honor Mr. Ambrosio's death.
Okay, okay. That I didn't know.
Okay, now you know.
That was not what was told to me, but regardless, we're talking about...
That wasn't told to you today?
Pardon?
I mean, that wasn't told to you today?
I heard something about a fight, it was a long message. And I mentioned it, I hadn't heard over the last week, when I had asked the question last week, and no one knew about it. And I mentioned about the fact that I had been aware that cardinality was one day, and then the President actually requested when they hit the 500,000 mark, that it go to the 26. That's all I knew. Now, this is something different. So now, there is a protocol that's followed?
Yes.
And that's just for firefighters?
Well, the policemen, it would be, I guess, if somebody parried...
Well, jurisdiction lies with...
Where's jurisdiction lie?
Yes, with how the flag is displayed. Who does apply it?
I guess it's on us, the government.
Okay, I thought you said Scott Card's.
No, Scott manages the flags by the direction of the mayor and council or the administrator, who is in charge on behalf of the mayor and council today then.
Okay.
Ultimately, it would be the mayor and council, though.
Well, I asked, that's what I asked you last night.
Yeah, and we got you an answer today.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay.
Trees, I know last year, there was a, some sort of push that people wanted a tree. Has there been any change over that?
Mike? We needed an ordinance from our, Mr. Ingraffia, would you like to talk about the borough tree ordinance?
I'm sorry?
The tree ordinance that you drafted for the borough so we could start the planting? Can you enlighten Mr. Frytag about that?
I can't hear the question.
We have a question out here, Sal, about the tree ordinance. You're working it?
Yes.
Okay, can you...
Yes, I am.
Could you explain it?
We have issued a temporary agreement that the people who have, are interested in receiving the trees and having the trees planted on their property will give away their release... will give away their release and for liability issues in order to proceed so that trees can be planted at the springtime or when they're going to be ready to be planted. The rewriting of the ordinance is very extensive, and I'm redoing the whole ordinance, which is going to be a lot more, more current and addressing issues of more current aspects.
Mayor, can I jump in on that?
Sure.
Because I spearheaded some of this when I was mayor, and, you know, we haven't implemented yet. February 8th, I followed up with the BA, Mr. Ingraffia, and Scott Cars. And Scott Cars, our DPW director, indicated that around March 26th, he'll be ordering 60 trees, 20 of each variety, and they have a seven-day turnaround. So in the next few weeks, the, however, you know, we're going to go back to the list of people. It's about 60, 70 people. Send them the hold harmless that Mr. Ingraffia came up with. Make sure they confirm that, you know, whatever, they still want the tree, and that process will start. So we'll have trees by the second week of April, and Mr. Cars will start planting them once people get everything in order.
Okay, thank you. Also, last week, at the meeting, at the work meeting, there was talk of remediation regarding drainage, and in particular, most of the corners. I know Councilperson, Councilwoman, Councilperson? Pellegrini had mentioned about her particular intersection by her home. Which ones are going to, there were 15 or 16, there was 15, I don't know what was.
There's 16, there was 17 of them, and if Mrs. Pellegrini's issue was incorporated, it would bring us up to that number. To recite them from memory, I couldn't do that right now, Jeff.
Okay, I was just interested about 102 Philip Avenue.
102 Philip?
The corner of Divinity?
Yeah, I believe that's on there.
Okay, good. Now, this morning, this morning or this afternoon, later this afternoon, I was reading through North Jersey media, now the council, you were quoted in newspaper, you're speaking about changing what had been adopted in 18 or 17 regarding pursuing or permitting marijuana sales in Elmwood Park?
Yes. We, yeah, go ahead.
So I reached out to the borough planner, who is going to do a study on this and make a recommendation in a report to the mayor and council for their consideration on that.
Okay, so that would be a retraction of what had been adopted then?
No, that's null and void with the new marijuana laws. So now the council has, I believe, till August to act. And if they don't act, then it's permitted anywhere and everywhere. If they act, then it can be zoned in certain locations.
Do you know anything regarding the distances from schools or anything? I tried to find that out.
I don't know that, but the planner's going to do all that research for us, and he's going to make recommend. I expressed to him on behalf of the council that we're not against cultivation or sale. However, we want it to be strategically placed in, definitely not in residential areas, preferably on our, two of our major highways or industrial areas.
So.
Mayor?
The council now has changed.
We have not taken, just to be clear, and I can't speak to the comments in the paper, the council's not taken a, has not taken an official position on this subject yet. We're still very much discussing it. So anything's possible, but I don't want to speak for any of the council members. But we've had very preliminary conversations since the law passed, just to be clear.
Just one other comment, this is not meant to disparage anyone, but at the library board meeting, you most certainly can speak, whether the mayor's there or not, you just can't vote.
I know.
Okay.
I respect him, because he's the person that is in charge of it, I'm the second person.
You speak up by your means.
Oh, I do, don't you hurt?
One other thing regarding public service. Most communities, I know the schools and that, you get a liaison to public service, to, like an ombuds, ombuds person that handles situations such as this. I know the library is a separate entity, but can that go? Now, there is electricity in there.
Partially.
Yeah, I know, you can see lights. And I know the explanation was, all that had to be, is the wire run from the pole, or it's in the ground?
It's all done. It's just now you need.
Is it buried?
It's buried across the back driveway going towards the back driveway. It comes up the side of the library, and then.
Goes through an entrance head into the building.
Yeah.
And.
But it's the service that's got to be.
They changed the service at that time?
It's changed.
And they do it.
We do, the contractor does it.
So it's just an inspection?
It's basically an inspection we're waiting on. We were waiting on, like I said, that news is about a week old. I will be updated on it tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Anyone else here to speak? If not, I will close the public portion. May I have a motion to enter an executive, please? All in favor? Thank you.
Where is the Open Public Meetings Act PL 1975, Chapter 231, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas this public body is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, and whereas the governing body wishes to discuss personnel matters and litigation, legal reports, minutes will be kept, and once a matter involving the confidentiality of the above no longer requires that confidentiality, then the minutes can be made public, now therefore be resolved that the public be excluded from this meeting.
Good night, thank you very much.